We'll call the meeting to order. I'll invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda are reports, and I'll invite Sandy Kovac to speak.
Thank you. Last month I reported that in May, three hundred and eighty-seven of our high school students took five hundred and seventy-nine exams. We now have additional information on some of those students, the majority of them being seniors who graduated in June. First, the category of AP Scholar. These are students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. And we have thirty-four twelfth graders in that category and one eleventh grader. Next, we go on to AP Scholar with Honor, the next category. These are students who receive an average score of at least three point two-five on all the AP exams they took, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. We have twenty-eight twelfth graders that earn this honor and one eleventh grader. Next highest category, AP Scholar with Distinction. This is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all their AP exams, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Remember, most of these are taken eleventh and twelfth grade. Ten twelfth graders earned that distinction. And then we have one National AP Scholar. This is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all their AP exams, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. So congratulations to all of our students, and we wish them well, those who graduated in June. This is a total then of about seventy-five students who earned some very high distinctions.
Try it again. Any comments or questions from the board? Congratulations to all of our students and to our teachers, administration, and everybody in the district that contributed to this kind of success. Sandy, did you indicate how it rated with the state overall?
I don't have that yet. I don't know how we're ranking with the state. We'll come back with more.
Okay. No other comments? Thanks for your report. Next on our agenda is citizens' requests to speak. We have one, Sharon Norton Baumann. Sharon, would you want to come to the mic? Can we bring the mic to her? Sharon, if you could just give us your full name and address, please.
Sure. My name's Sharon Norton Baumann. I live at eleven fifty Front Street South in Hudson. And I really thank you for this opportunity to speak to the board tonight. I have a couple things that are not on your agenda that I'd like to ask some questions about, and if not get feedback tonight, perhaps get feedback in the future. I have read the two thousand and four report that the Citizens Committee prepared for facilities for the Hudson School District. And I noted that three of the current school board members either served on that committee or were school board members at the time that report was submitted. And I just am wondering what has caused those three members in particular to change their minds or opinions about the wisdom of going to a twenty-five-hundred student school? Because the report, as I read it, quite clearly indicates that the consensus of that study group was that high schools of that size were not a wise thing to do, both for the students and for the community. So if you can in the future, give me some feedback about something I may not know about that's occurred since two thousand and four. It would be helpful for me to understand how that idea got changed. The other thing I'd like to briefly just mention to you is that there's not been an opportunity for the public to talk to you as a board about the actions you took in July concerning one of your members and one of your past employees. And I would just like to say to you that I think it would be wise if you could find a better way to follow up on an ethics complaint than to publicly humiliate both your board member and the prior employee. The world I come from, which is in public service, there are policies that can be followed that will take an ethics complaint before an ethics committee in closed session so that the complainant and the person who's having the complaint against them have an opportunity to speak to an ethics committee in private. Then if there seems to be an incident or an occurrence that requires or would be of such significance that it could be brought before the whole board, at that point in time, the ethics committee would bring that before the whole board for a decision on what to do. I'm really quite disturbed that that policy is not in any of the policies I can find online for your board. And I really would encourage you to find a better way to handle an ethics complaint than the way you handled it in July. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. Any responses to the questions? Brian?
Mr. President, just respond, because I have a question around the members, such as myself, who run the facilities, long-range task force back in two thousand and four. And our recommendation, our final recommendation was a three-year high school and a new elementary school. But the top three recommendations was a two-year school that could be over time, could be expanded into a four-year school, a three-year, a second year, a three-year high school and a four-year high school. Those are the three final recommendations. And I think the school of thought is that we want to make sure that whatever we do has the ability to expand so that we don't have to have a short-term solution. You know, a short-term could be fifteen, twenty years, is that we don't want to have to go through another referendum. So the idea on having a twenty-five-hundred-person school was just, it may not be optimal that big of a school, but at a certain point, we may need one, and we want to make sure we have the flexibility for that. So that was the, that'd be my comment on that.
Anybody else? Dan?
I was on the board at the time. I wasn't particularly on the task force. So I guess before I comment in response to the question, I'd like to be on the same page because I'm not terribly familiar with the report that you're bringing out after roughly eight years. So I'd be happy to take a look at the report and see if I can recall some of the facts and circumstances and the context of any remarks that I may have said, but I think that's the best I can offer at this point.
I think there was a question also regarding the size of the school and what the report indicated that that, according to you, Sharon, indicated that that was not advantageous to the educational process. So I don't know if you guys remember that or not. We might have to go back and look at that, so. Okay. Regarding the other question that you had, I'll refer to our attorney regarding that and have him, Mick Walzberger.
Thank you, members of the board. The question that was presented was, or comment that was made, was along the lines of criticism for publicly reporting to the board on the results of the investigation into the conduct of a former employee. I want to be clear that the only reason why that report was made public or was publicly done was because the employee very publicly stated her allegations against high-ranking school officials and other employees by implication of the district as well. There were allegations that were made in the local newspaper, and this was simply an investigation conducted in response to that. As you know very well, the board has been criticized in the past for not being transparent enough. This was certainly an effort at being as transparent as possible. That same reasoning applies with respect to the investigation relative to board member Gerke. In addition, I would note that there, I am aware that there were previous concerns with board member Gerke and previous efforts to address them in a private manner, and those efforts were not effective. Unfortunately, that put us in a position where we, as you as a board, had little option, in my view, other than to address the matter publicly and in the most transparent manner possible.
Okay. We'll move on then to topics for action. Preliminary budget, Tim?
I'll go through this rather quickly as you'll be going through the same thing at the annual meeting shortly. But if you turn to the first page of the budget adoption report, and if you look at, I'll just start off, and I'll highlight some of the items on the budget, on the proposed budget. For line two thousand and ten, or two-ten, which is taxes, that is at twenty-four million, five ninety-one, four fifty for twelve thirteen. That represents an increase for the general fund tax levy of two point one-six percent. And then moving down to line six-twenty, which is general state aid, and you'll see that, oops, I am missing, I'm missing some pages off my report. So I'm going to look up at the screen. So, yeah, if we go by fund, and you can see general fund stands at forty-nine million, eight forty. And I'll get into some more detail on the specific items in the general fund. The special revenue trust fund is what holds different types of donations and grants. And the special education fund holds all the operations when revenue, these are revenue items I'm talking about right now, hold revenue for special education operations across the district. The non-referendum debt service fund is qualified school construction bonding, which is a net interest-free bond. And then referendum-approved debt service is all other bonds that have been, that have been approved by the voters and are generally for building projects. Food service, again, that's pretty self-explanatory. And then community service, which holds community service activities, including school-age care. And then our co-op programs, which are with St. Croix Central and New Richmond for our youth apprenticeship program. So I'm going to move down to expenditures. Again, I'm going to go through this rather quickly because we'll have some more time at the annual meeting to go through this. The general fund expenditures, fifty million, two thirty-two, and that's about a two point nine-one percent increase in total expenditures for the general fund. And the special revenue trust fund, again, those are grants and donations. Special education fund, eight million, thirty-seven. And the non-referendum debt service fund at forty-two thousand, six hundred. And the approved debt service fund at four million, nine seventy-five. If we jump down, I'll skip the next two because they're not applicable to the current year. Food service, two million, six forty-two is the expenditure there. That's, those are, that fund is primarily user-based fees. And then community service at one million, two forty-one, five sixty, again, a fund that is user-based fees. And then we've got our vocational co-op fund. So if we move on to the next page. Okay, now we're into a little bit more of the detail. And so if you look at that first line, the tax revenue side, twenty-four million, five ninety-one, and this is for the general fund, and that represents an increase of two point one-six percent in tax revenue for the general fund. And then I'm going to skip down to state aid general, and you can see that stands at twenty-three million, eight forty. And that's an increase, and this is an estimate at this point in time from the state. Final numbers will come out in October, and the board will approve a final budget in, towards the end of October. But right now, we've got an increase of about one million, five hundred, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand in state aid under the estimate that's been issued by the Department of Public Instruction. And then I'm going to skip down to line seven eighty, again, just highlighting some things, the other federal revenue through the state. That was a special program, lasted over a period of two years, and so that program's gone away. So we've got a decrease of one point one million in revenue going from the eleven-twelve to the twelve-thirteen budget. So we're up with the state aid, which is good news, but down by one point one million for revenue from federal sources. And then again, I won't get into a lot of detail, but you can see down towards the bottom, a third of the page, how the different amounts are broken apart by undifferentiated curriculum, regular curriculum, vocational, physical curriculum, et cetera. And then if I move on to the next page, again, the same thing. You can see the different functional areas that the expenditures are broken down into. And these are expenditures for anything from salaries to supplies, and including utilities and those types of things. If you go on to the bottom third of that, the second third of that box, non-program transactions. The inter-fund transfers are transfers to the special education fund, and that's just the balance of what isn't covered by federal or state grants. And then if I go down to the bottom, you can see the second section in that box, you can see fund balance projections. And then we'll move on to the special projects funds, the second section of that page. And special projects funds are, in this example, they include funds twenty-one, which I had mentioned before are the grants and donations, and then fund twenty-seven, which is special education. And so you can see the numbers there. Those are consolidated numbers. And then debt service funds, that's, those are all outstanding indebtedness for the district. And if you go down to the very bottom of that box, you can see the total indebtedness at the end of the year. So, and moving across, projected to be thirty-three million, nine fifty. And that includes, in this case, that includes the purchase of the St. Croix Meadows property for eight and a quarter million dollars. So that includes the bonded debt for the purchase of that property, or the debt service for that period. And those are estimates, estimates based on the interest rates where they are right now. If we move on to the next page, capital projects fund is just, there is a small amount of fund balance there that the board will determine how to use coming up in the near future. Food service fund, again, pretty self-explanatory. That's a user, primarily user-based fees. There is an improvement project in there for food service. That's why you see the expenditures that are above the revenues for that fund for twelve thirteen. And then again, community service fund, and then our cooperative program with St. Croix Central in New Richmond. And then down at the very bottom, we've got some notes there on the other post-employment benefits trust. That's a trust that was established back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, and it's used to account for the activity of post-employment benefits. Okay, next page. And this would be the proposed resolution that you will see tonight for the annual meeting. And if you add, as I mentioned before, the increase in the tax levy for the general fund was two point one-six percent. And if you add the debt service to it, including St. Croix Meadows, and you add those two together, the increase from last year is two point eight-seven percent. So any questions? I know I went through that quick.
Any questions from the board? Sandy?
The last page, the one that says the Hudson School District, the one before this, the revenue is by fund, this one. I'm not clear on why the budget has gone up from two thousand and eleven, twelve, of forty-eight million, eight hundred and eleven to fifty million. That's up one million, four hundred and twenty thousand. Can you give me a better explanation of why that's up so high, why that went up so much this year?
Okay, again, you're looking at the-
Which line?
Line ten E, the general fund.
Okay. It happens to be one page, just one second.
Well, the general fund revenue went up by nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, on this report, anyway. So I'm assuming that's because of additional state aid?
That would be additional state aid. There would be also, but there's also, we've got losses of federal revenue as well. So I guess if you're looking for, again, I'm going to try to find the page that I'm missing here.
Ten E, I think is the line.
Oh, I see. Okay. And which, and again, I'm going to ask you which one, Sandy, again, which number are you looking at?
Line, I understand the general fund revenue going up. It comes out to nine sixty-six, eight eighty-eight. So I'm assuming that's because state aid increased, but some other federal aid or something else decreased, so it comes out to that. You said state aid increased by over a million?
Yeah, a combination of different revenue sources that make that up.
Then my question is, I understand the increase in revenue. I'm wondering about the increase in expenditures on line ten E. For the two thousand and eleven budget, we have forty-eight million, eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. For two thousand and twelve, it's fifty million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand. It's one million, four hundred and twenty thousand and some change, higher than last year. So if you went through those figures before on these charts, I wasn't getting a clear understanding of why our expenditures are going up almost one and a half million dollars.
Well, the percentage increase is a two point nine-one percent increase. There's different reasons for those expenditure increases. There would be proposed increases for salaries. We have an increase in health insurance this year of about six percent. And there are various increases. We build increases in it for utilities. We build increases in for transportation costs and fuel costs. So there's a number of different things that make up that two point nine-one percent increase.
Is any of, you said there's increases for wages, facilities, things like that, insurance. Is that broken out anywhere on this report?
It's not broken out on this report, no.
Okay.
Tim, is the CPI or the inflation rate over that period of time, do you know what that was?
The, well, for two thousand and eleven, it ended at three point one-six percent.
So factoring the three point one-six percent inflation rate, and our rate went up by one point, what, six percent?
We, our total is two point nine-one.
So we're under the inflation rate?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wondered what it was and if there was any place in this report I could find it.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Are we ready for a motion? Anybody? We can go to the, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve resolution to set the tax levy for two thousand and twelve, thirteen. Be it resolved that a tax in the total amount of twenty-nine million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five, twenty-four thousand, excuse me, twenty-four million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty general fund, four million, six hundred and seven hundred and twenty-five debt service fund be and is hereby levy to against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Thank you. Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian Bell. Any further discussion?
This type of vote, do we have to have a roll call vote on this kind of thing?
Don't believe you have to have a roll call.
Okay, I'd ask for one, please.
Okay. Request for a roll call vote. Any other discussion before we go to that? Okay. Pat, we'll start with you.
German, aye.
Kaiser, shot, aye.
Trenhoy, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, no.
Bell, aye.
Okay, the motion passes, and thanks for your work on this, and we'll be talking more about this at the annual meeting. Next item for action is open enrollment exception, two thousand and twelve, thirteen applications. Cory?
Thank you. I'll also attempt to go through this quickly. At the August fourteenth school board meeting, I reviewed with the board the change in the open enrollment law, and that it now allows for exceptions to open enrollment. You took action on five applications at that meeting. In your board materials, you'll see the district's received another application for a tenth-grade student for an exception to open enrollment out of the Hudson School District. As the administration reviews these applications, we continue to use the decision-making criteria for the regular open enrollment applications established by the board on the May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve board meeting. At that meeting, the district approved all fifty applications they received at that time for students applying out of the district. Since the twenty-ninth of May, we've received four open enrollment exception applications out, and the board has approved all four of those applications. At this time, the administration is also recommending the approval of this application out of the district. The reasons stated by the parent are that the student's place of residence has changed as a result of a custody agreement determined by the court, and the parent believes that this is in the best interest of the child. The administration believes that the criteria relied on by the parent does apply, and the administration is in agreement with the parents that this would be in the best interest of the child after careful consideration of the circumstances. So the administration recommends that you approve the application.
Okay, and we're discussing the applications out only this point?
The one you have tonight is for out.
For out, so.
Yeah, it's the one highlighted in your materials.
Right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, move to approve the open enrollment applications out.
Motion by Lynn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take, we'll take a roll call vote. I'll just take a regular vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion approves. Thank you. Consent items, we will take this as a group, and I'd like to ask if somebody could read the language around the expenditures.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the consent items, including expenditures in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. We'll move now to, I'll entertain a motion, if it could be read out loud, to adjourn to closed session for the purposes indicated.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, parent G, to negotiate the purchase of public property and to confer with legal counsel and to discuss negotiation strategy concerning the St. Croix Meadows property.
Is there a second? Second by Dan. Any discussion?
Chairman Holland, I comment just for a moment. I'd like to clarify, too, that the, some members may be wondering about the negotiation strategy. That refers specifically to potential renegotiations with respect to the St. Croix Meadows property in light of some of the concerns expressed by the city council or the city planning commission.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Motion still stand, I assume? Okay, and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Pat?
German, aye.
Kaiser, shot, aye.
Trenhoy, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, aye.
Bell, aye.
Motion approves. We'll adjourn to closed session and then be back for the annual meeting at- meeting at 7:00 PM.